Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular meeting Monday, October 9th, 2023. Calling the meeting to order at 6:30. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Claudia Rona?
Here.
Mayor Protem Elizabeth Rona?
Here.
Mayor Infante?
Present. I know him!
Someone took position of that. We're sorry.
Very interesting. Mr. Butler, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have no proclamations. Presentations. You want to introduce that, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, as we've done with most of the other departments so far, once a month, we're bringing up presentation to help the council and our community get to know our various departments of what we do. A lot of what goes on happens behind the scenes and is otherwise not, you know, made aware to the community. So it's an opportunity that I brought in from other jurisdiction that I like to try and do to help everybody get familiar. And as we cycle through each of the departments, we'll do some deeper drilling, but you know, right now, we're just first time through. So Jenny has been voluntold to do this. Actually, she was more than happy to do it. But with that, take it away, Jenny. Can I just see your screen?
There you go.
There I am. All right. Mayor and council members, I am Jenny McClurg, your Parks and Recreation Director. And I'd like to think that all these people are here to listen to me. We are the Fun Department, so I get to tell you a little bit about Parks and Rec. Okay, so our team, you have me in the middle there. We have Candace Libera on the right. She's our Recreation Coordinator. And then over on the left, we have Fred Logman. He is our Recreation Special Events, and he is an independent contractor. You might notice him, he was our past previous Parks and Recreation Director. He was part of the COVID Purge and subsequently retired, and so he is back as an independent contractor doing events for us. And then we have our Recreation Clerk, which is currently vacant. It has not been filled since COVID. And we actually have an offer out right now, and so we are looking forward to that individual starting. And then we also have our Parks Maintenance that is also vacant. We'll have two employees, and we'll be hiring for those positions very soon while we transfer and transition from Public Works to Parks. Okay, our mission statement is to create and maintain a Parks and Recreation System which provides important environmental, social, personal, and economic benefits central to the city's residents. Our goal is to provide fun, safe, exciting, and entertaining opportunities for everyone through our beautiful parks and popular recreation programs. We look forward to doing fun stuff with you. We have three parks at, with the city. And first on the left is Sunny Fields Park. That is 6.69 acres. In the middle, we have Hans Christian Andersen Park. That is 51.22 acres. And then we have Solving Park on the right, and that is .58 acres. The Parks Department and currently Public Works, we have open spaces and facilities, landscape that we oversee. So you'll see over top left, we have Alice Hall Commons, Chromeborg Open Space, Creekside Open Space, the ZeroScape, which is just up Mission Drive as you're coming from like New Frontiers. And then we have the Vets Hall where we maintain the landscape areas, and then City Hall and the Annex Buildings. Okay, so a couple of park projects that we are currently working on. The pickleball courts, which will actually be coming to you probably next meeting with some direction. We have some options. And we are currently looking for a recruiting for a park host that is currently vacant, and we are doing repairs at the home while it is unoccupied. And then we're also adding some signage at Sunny Fields to the other end of the park where people are entering. Okay, we do, in Parks and Rec, we take all of the park reservations for each park. And so at Hans Christian Andersen, we have five reservable areas, and they are shown here. With the reservations, you know, we're coordinating scheduling, we're taking payment, we're returning deposits, we're answering a lot of questions, we're going over maps. It's a full-time job. And then with Sunny Fields, the same thing. We have two reservable picnic areas, which are on the left, Area A and B. And then we also reserve the grass area, we reserve the volleyball courts, and then we reserve the softball fields as well. Okay, we have several park amenities. At Hans Christian Andersen, we have the tennis courts, skate park, we have trails, playground. And then at Sunny Fields, we have the softball fields, volleyball courts, grass area for rent. And then we partner, which you can see on the top left here, we partner with the high school. And the boys and girls sand volleyball teams use our courts as their home court. Over to the Vets Hall, we also reserve, and our office is in charge of maintaining those. So we coordinate the scheduling, collecting insurance, security. We collect the payment, we return deposits, we do tours of the rooms, you know, answer a lot of questions. That also is a full-time job. And we reserve three areas, the Large Hall on the left, the Legion Wing, and then the kitchen. There are also other rooms, which we do not reserve, and they're solely the vets' rooms. Okay, moving on to Recreation. So here's just a bunch of pictures of a lot of our programs and our philosophy. And I won't read the whole thing, but kind of one of the main points is we want you to know that we provide positive, productive, quality, and healthy activities for people of all ages, for our community members during their leisure time. And when we have happy residents, we have a happy city. All right, so part of Recreation are youth programs. And again, just a lot of pictures of some of the things that we do. We do several adult programs and adult sports leagues for adults. So we have guitar classes, we do several trips to museums, and you know, plays, we'll go down to the Pantages. We have several leagues like softball league, basketball league, bocce leagues. And then for special events, we have events that are focused on our community. And those are events such as the Easter Extravaganza, we have Mother-Son Luau, wreck and roll, the tree burn, we do teen dances, movies in the park, turkey trot. And then our biggest event is the Haunted House. And so that is coming up, and we are getting ready for that. This year's theme is tainted souls. Even clowns have feelings. So that is quite a production, and we're busy doing that for about four weeks. So we started this week, and we'll end the first week of November with cleanup. In addition, we also run the City of Solving Special Events. So those are events like Danish Days, Yule Fest, the Halloween Parade that Solving School puts on, Pride Event, Hispanic Heritage, I think I said Danish Days already. But all of those events, the Half Marathon, all of those events that you see in downtown Solving, we coordinate that. So we're looking at maps, we're coordinating staff, we're closing down streets, collecting insurance, security, you know, just making sure that everything is going to be safe and that the city will benefit from these events. We also maintain the highway banner and streetlight banner programs. And so we collect the applications, we process the payments, we schedule with maintenance staff for the installation and removal. Our highway banners are very busy. We don't have an opening until, I think, like February of 2024. And then our streetlight banners. And this year, we are doing Yule Fest. So we are excited about that and have hired an independent contractor to help us with that. And we're moving along great and getting things going and excited to bring that to you. And that concludes my presentation, and we look forward to doing fun stuff with you. Any questions?
I love your energy.
I love my job.
It shows.
Jenny, great job. A couple of questions. Do you have, she does deserve applause, so thank you very much. Do we do co-events with Buellton or other schools or communities?
We do. So all of those events that I mentioned, we do with Buellton. It's hard to run separate events. We need the manpower with Buellton staff. And there's no reason in running two of the same events. We put them together and with the staff, it's much, much easier.
Okay. Do you have a, like, a review process, like Google review or something? How are, what feedback do you get from our citizens that enjoy the Parks and Recreation Department?
We don't have any type of Google review. We usually, you know, it's word of mouth. I can tell you, in the 15 years I've been here, I think we've had one complaint. You know, we usually just take that as feedback. Usually, everybody has great things to say, but we're always open to, you know, ideas. And many people will call and suggest things, and so we'll take those into consideration.
And they know that there's an event or the league is open, by where do they find that information?
So we're on our city website. We put out quarterly calendars. And there's, excuse me, we do it three times a year. We have a calendar that goes out that goes to all the schools, the libraries, all the popular places where people can get those. And then we also have Facebook and Instagram, and that's where a lot of our information is out there.
And the only thing that you didn't mention was a skate park. Is that popular?
I think I did in our amenities, but we do have the skate park at Hans Christian Andersen Park. We hold camps there, we hold clinics, and then otherwise, it's just open to the public. It's very popular, especially after school. And we do have actually some competitions there with the local business in town, Solving Skate Shop, and we'll hold and host competitions with them.
Thank you. Anything else?
I had just some feedback, Jenny, because you guys do such a great job, and it seems like people really do take advantage of the services. And getting the word out is always good. Just two things, which was to really emphasize maybe some youth programs that target the ninth to 12th graders?
That is the toughest.
If they're not athletic, I know, it's the toughest to draw them, but they just need more things to do, I'm thinking. And the second thing was a bit of feedback I got some time ago that, because you mentioned the marathon, it triggered a memory. I think we held a marathon on Mother's Day last year? Does that sound right?
The Santa Barbara County Half Marathon is held the day before Mother's Day.
The day before?
Yes.
The feedback was to try to avoid those holidays that are typically, you know, drive people to shop or eat. And I know you have a strategic plan how to do that, but that was some feedback I got.
Yeah, and we're working on that with our special events and, you know, trying to get those events where it's not on a holiday prime weekend. So we'll be coming back to you with those special events.
Super.
Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the comment, the report. Okay, so next on the agenda is public communications for non-agenda and consent items. Madam Clark, if you would introduce that, please.
At this time, you may address the council on items not on the agenda and on the consent calendar. Time limit is three minutes. We will start with in-person public comments first.
Do we have anybody that has a non-agenda comment? Okay, do we have anybody online who would like to make a comment on a non-agenda item? Okay, in that case, we are down to consent items. We are not. We're at the City Manager Report. Thank you very much. Go ahead, Randy, please.
I'm feeling unloved. Don't have a lot. I just received right before the meeting this evening, notice from the county OES that they are likely, there is likely to be a PSPS event, which is a Public Safety Power Shut-Off, I believe, in the South County. They're expecting some pretty significant winds due to some incoming weather pattern. So it does not appear that it will be in our area, but down in the south part of the county. So I'm making the announcement simply because obviously, things change, and it may. Right now, they're not even suspecting it, but Murphy's Law says. I need to say something to help protect us from it happening. So I'm announcing that. Also, I did want to let everybody know that I did attend a Channel County City Managers Meeting in Buellton last Friday, an opportunity to meet with basically SLO, Ventura, and Santa Barbara County City Managers. Quite a bit of turnover in the City Manager ranks in our little neck of the woods. So I've been here, you know, five and a half months now, and I'm probably in the top three or four, seniority-wise, or will be by the end of the year, because a lot of them are leaving by the end of the year. I thought that was interesting. Also attended a homeless coalition with the county, a Zoom meeting on Friday. So that's all I have to report at this time.
Thank you very much. Any comments from the council on the City Managers Report? All right. In that case, we are open for council comments and requests. Anybody in the council have a comment or a request?
I want to thank the team for putting together the power washing areas and the schedule, but the schedule stops in September, so I'd like to get the rest of it, if you would be so kind. And I'd like to, in a format that we can distribute to the downtown merchants or owner, either tenants or landowners.
Excellent idea.
I do have a comment. This was during Saturday, the Car Classic was a fantastic display. I wanted to give a shout out to Public Works, who upon receiving a call from local merchants saying that one of the tree branches was about to fall down, and it was just being held up by the Christmas lights. Within half an hour, he was there fixing up the problem, and she was very happy, and she just wanted to give him a shout out. He did get a little bit of grief from a car owner who was not happy about tree debris and, you know, shavings from cutting the branch down. But I think it's perfectly reasonable that it's much better to have debris and shavings on top of your car than a 200-pound branch on top of your car. So big shout out to them. Thank you.
It was an excellent point, because during the awards ceremony is when that was brought out to the car owners. And they had the two lots that were underneath that limb, and they said, "We really recommend you move your cars, because we're afraid that might come down." It was, I would like to second how great of an event that was. We had over 200 custom cars here. had over 200 custom cars here, and I had to pick one of them to get a trophy. Yeah, right?
It was yours, right?
No, but there were offers of money. No, I, but it was, it was, it was a spectacular show. It was a lot of work from a lot of people. But it went off very, very well. So I, I think that was, that was a great event this weekend. Anybody else? Sure.
Yeah, just for Public, or Public Works, I'm noticing that the tree lights are on in the middle of the day, and I don't know why we're paying for that power. It just doesn't have the same ambiance at noon as it does.
Well, we did have a power outage a week or so ago. It's possible with timers if they're on.
It was today that I noticed.
I'll check it out.
Thank you.
Well, I know part of the problem was we were, we were, there was, for instance, the music at the, at the car show. We had to turn on and off because there was some power that was out. We had to have maintenance come out and turn the switches on on the power outlets. There was a lot of things going on. And so some of the lights might have been turned on just in trying to make sure we had light, power to everything. It was an interesting day. We were doing a lot of running around. It was hot. Yes, it was. It was very hot. Okay, in that case, let's move on to consent items. Then I believe, Ms. Clerk, if you would introduce that item.
Consent is for routine administrative city matters and is approved with one motion. These items are discussed only on request of council members. Members of the public were afforded an opportunity to speak during the public communications portion of this agenda.
We have no, well, if I'm, do we have comments from the council? Sorry. Anybody want to pull anything off of this consent agenda?
I don't want to pull anything, but it's just, and I'm not pointing a finger at anybody, but every single time we sit down here, it's a company X, Y, Z for a, services for an additional amount not to exceed X. And I'm just like, I, I just, I know there's always extenuating circumstances in everybody's contracts and, and scope of services and whatnot. But I wish we had someone we can get a handle on this, because it seems like we're, everybody's coming back with their hand out asking us for more money for every subletting we do here in the city. And I don't know how we, how we explore, tighten this up. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, and a good point. But I would like to suggest that in the past, the city council, city manager has a level of authority, and he can just authorize it without even coming to us within that level of authority. Randy hasn't done that. He's brought that into us to see every time. So you're seeing more than you've ever seen in a previous city council meeting about what's going on on these contract extensions.
I didn't know that.
So part of the, what you're, what you're reacting to is the fact that, that our city manager is giving us more detail than we ever had in the past. So it, it might look like that's a problem. It's something that's happened before. Would you like to speak to that?
And, and also, what I would suggest is when this agenda is posted, that if they're already concerned about any specific item, you can always ask me about it before, you know, before the meeting. And I'm not suggesting you don't ask it at the meeting as well, but, you know, there are, like you said, there's almost always an extenuating circumstance. And I do my best to limit that. And if you recall, when we did a lot of this at, at the end of the budget year in June and the first part of July, I mentioned that we were doing that, but we're going to be bidding a lot of those new jobs, or those RFPs again. And I brought it to staff's attention last week. So we're not, this is, unfortunately, we're still cleaning up what issues from the past in some respect, so.
And I'm in no way trying to
No, I understand. I appreciate the comment, though.
expose you in public, but I just, this, the process is what I'm thinking about.
Well, I also think that it's fair to bring up that a lot of these contracts are filling in for positions or things that would normally be done in-house. And the reason why we have them extended is because we haven't recruited the person that does it. But if you weren't paying for a contractor to take on these duties, you would be paying salaries and benefits to somebody in-house. So it's not necessarily something that is in addition. This would be a, a concurrence expense.
And it probably wouldn't be brought before the council every time.
Right.
That's true, but I'm glad you brought that up, Councilman Arona, because I think that this is through June of 2024, the total extension, but we're keeping this contractor until December. Is that right?
Well, the hope is we don't need it beyond December, yes. I mean, we've got, I shared the recruitment brochure with you in my email on Friday. The, the due date for that utilities director position is the end of this month. And we hope to have somebody recruited and in place by the end of the calendar year so that we can hand off. And yeah, and again, it's a not to exceed, I could, in this instance, I could have just extended it for the 140,000.
Let me rephrase that, Randy. Is a $90,000 additional amount, is that equivalent to the three-month extension, or is it equivalent to?
Through the, through June. So 30,000 a quarter, basically.
So we're, we've got some buffer room in case we don't get great candidates. Is that how you're approaching it? Great.
So nobody has any items to pull off the consent? Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Claudia Rona.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Elizabeth Arona.
Yes.
Mayor Infante.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to item five. I'll get to it here in a second, I'm sure. We don't have anything on item five, which is the public hearing, so we'll go to item six, the discussion. Item 6A is the first one. Madam Clerk, if you would introduce that, please.
Discussion on possible action to adopt for second reading by title only, ordinance number 230369, removing section 625, amending section 7310, and adding chapter six camping to title five, public health and safety of the Solvang Municipal Code, and making a determination of exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This item is back for you on second reading again. On mature August 28th meeting, the city council introduced an ordinance to modify the city's existing camping regulations to conform to current developments in the law. When it came back for the second reading at the September 11th meeting, there were some concerns raised by members of the community regarding the ordinance and what it was intended to do. And I just want to make clear what the intention of this ordinance is at the outset, is to provide city staff the tools to address unlawful camping within the city. Without the tools from this ordinance, the city really has no effective tools in place right now. So this is intended to give city staff and law enforcement additional tools. So the ordinance provides some fairly extensive regulations as to time, place, and manner where camping would be permitted in those situations where someone finds themselves involuntarily homeless and there are no available shelter spaces. But what it does not do, it does not invite people into the community for this. It just provides an opportunity for staff to regulate it and ameliorate the issue when it comes up. So I want to be very clear on that. So when we came back with the ordinance to look at it, we decided that the issues that were raised at the last meeting, while important, obviously, to address at some point, it is more important that we get the ordinance in place. And that's why we've brought it back for second reading without change from the first reading. Because if we have to make changes, then we'll have to do two more readings of it, and it'll be another 30 days, and we will not have those tools in place. As with any ordinance, however, it is subject to change in the future. But I would rather have something in place than nothing in place for the next 90 days, because we are going to be getting into a situation where it is going to be getting colder, and people are going to be looking for places to camp. They will be looking to start fires to keep themselves warm. Without the ordinance before you, we will not have the tools to address that issue effectively. So the recommendation is, as it was at the September 11th meeting, is to go ahead and adopt the ordinance on second reading. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I want.
Questions?
Could you please address for us and the audience and the public what the, this whole thing with this, the, there was a lawsuit. Talk about the lawsuit, please.
There's multiple lawsuits, but I'll give you kind of the high level. The City of Boise was sued because it was, it was essentially criminalizing the act of being homeless. So people who were sleeping in public were being cited, they were being arrested. And the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals said you can't criminalize the status of being homeless. You can address concerns about activities and so on. So City of Boise made it more difficult to enforce camping ordinances and sleeping ordinances. Then the City of Grants Pass had the same thing happen with their case. It is now on a petition for cert for the U.S. Supreme Court, which means the Supreme Court is going to be addressing the issue. So the state of the case law is in flux, but I will tell you that a number of agencies in Southern California have been sued for their approach to removing homeless encampments because they don't have an effective time, place, and manner regulation. They just come in and clean it up, and they are getting sued for this. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to thread the needle between what the case law is currently and the current situation in Solvang, which is basically the same kind of ordinance that was rendered unconstitutional in the City of Boise case. So we're putting in, into place, or recommending putting into place a tool that's more consistent with the current state of case law.
Okay. And if I made the last question, in the discussion part, I'm sorry, the first paragraph of the discussion, when it talks about the city's camping regulations to conform to current developments in the law, and I've never seen that, that word used that way in a discussion, if you could explain that as well.
It is a, it is a shifting landscape.
It seems ambiguous.
It is ambiguous, because I can't tell you with great certainty what the Supreme Court is going to do. Usually, when the Supreme Court gets a petition for certiari, you have an idea of why. In this particular case, I'm not sure whether the Supreme Court will take it or what the status is going to be. So there is some uncertainty in this area of the law. But as I said before, I would rather have an ordinance that I am comfortable in enforcing than having an ordinance that I am uncomfortable enforcing, given the current state of the law. And that's why the recommendation is before you to adopt this ordinance.
Thank you. I'm done.
Anyone else? The key comments here are what we have cannot be enforced. And Lieutenant Valencia is in the back of the room, and would be glad to address that if you'd like to hear about it. But the bottom line to it is if somebody put up a tent on the street in front of your house, you have no right to remove them under the current regulations. So we are trying to institute a, a, an ordinance that will allow us to remove them. Now, there's, there's time limits, there's everything, like, like the attorney has said, there is a lot going on in the legal cases. And what you can and can't do is very, I like that, threading the needle. It's, it's, it's playing a game. We can't identify a space for them to go camp because that will invite them to go camp. All right? So what we're trying to do right now is, to be rude, cover our butts, because what we have cannot be enforced. We will change it the minute the law allows, and the attorney finds out the new rulings will come before you again and ask to modify that again. But right now, we're looking at trying to cover ourselves. All right. Last, yes, sir.
Mr. Attorney, when was the original ordinance's passed?
Gosh, it's before my time, and I've been with the city since 98, so I'm going to say in the mid 90s.
Okay, in that case, we'll take it to the public. I have two requests for comments from the public. Mr. Carl Butler, please.
Thank you. I, a little, I appreciate the direction that the council was going on this issue. But I want to add a little of the experience that I've had with homeless. Going back to the 60s, when I joined the Los Angeles City Fire Department, I was assigned as a rookie to a station in Skid Row, Fire Station 9, right at 7th and San Julian. And it was, Skid Row was localized more of a drinking problem, intoxication, and nothing what we see now currently that we're experiencing in other areas. Over the years, I promoted and retired as a chief officer from the Los Angeles Fire Department. And by that time, Skid Row had changed to an area of like two square miles surrounding the inner city of Los Angeles. We used to, as a city here, we would rent a bus, and they would take a shopping group down there, what was then called the Shopping District, or it kind of upgraded to a designer group area. And that has changed a lot. Those stalls where the people used to buy these Gucci knockoffs and stuff has been turned into a public urinal. And some of the things that I'm hearing from the members that work down there, I can't even talk about it here, disgusting, what that area has changed. And I don't want to see it happen here in this city. Once it gets started, it's hard to stop it. We failed in the City of Los Angeles to handle the issue. What we did was pick an area on East Los Angeles to set up an area designated for, oh, factory-built housing, urinals, some of the things that made it a nice area to live in. The people who resided in the streets didn't want to go there. They had their own mayor, they had their own city system, and they didn't want to go there. So that fell in a heap. I don't want our city making that as a, as an answer to this, finding a blank piece of property and put all these amenities in there. It just doesn't work. Okay. The thing I want to talk about is first responders. Some ugly stuff out there for the first responders. Engine 30, 31, 32 here in the area of Santa Barbara County. They're the ones that are going to have to go out at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning and handle these emergency calls. And it's not like the DTs of old days. It's going to be some ugly stuff, stuff that I have up in my mind that's hard to get out of there. You can wash your hands of some of the filth, but to get the stuff out of your head, it's hard to do. So I just want to make sure that we keep them in mind, the ambulance people. So anyway, that's a little of the history of, of homeless with me. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate it. I believe this says Darlene Bayer, Boyer? How'd I do?
Hi, Honorable Mayor and council members and everyone. I wasn't here, I was out of town the very first time that everyone spoke about this. So I didn't have until you explained the understanding of what you exactly are trying to do. But I'm a resident of Solvang, have been for 27 years. Santa Barbara County, came from Santa Barbara. I'm on the Board of Directors for the Village Collection in, just down the road here, the Village Collection Homeowners Association. And I think Art George, who also spoke, I think at the last time, expressed that the Village Collection, we've personally had to deal with homeless in our front parks. I mean, we've even had to remove couches and other things that, you know, people sleeping under bushes. So, you know, obviously, it's a concern of ours. From our perspective, we are opposed to having an ability to have homeless come to the commu, you know, to come to our community. We're concerned that, concerned that a steady stream of transient homelessness or campers, basically, has the potential to be a public nuisance. We view it as a health and safety issue for all of our residents. And, you know, cities such as Lompoc, other cities, Santa Barbara, San Francisco, you take a look at some of their, you know, situations, their public nuisance has escalated to crime, which has then brought in drugs. They've had gangs then as a result, and lots of public defecation, which is disgusting. But, you know, ultimately, it resulted in their businesses going out of business and the property values going down. So we're obviously want to, you know, be mindful of that. A friend of mine shared with me this morning that lives in Lompoc that says regularly, they have campers over there, that there's an individual who regularly exposes himself to the community on a regular basis, and they don't seem to be able to do anything about it. So I just want to express that we know that your job is to protect the citizens of our beautiful valley here, this lovely slice of heaven that we live in. And we would like to, you know, again, I wasn't aware that you're trying to, I wasn't aware of the, the rules or the ordinance changes. And so we're, you know, want to make sure that it's clear that we don't want camping in our community. The other thing is that we also oppose, or we actually, Lot 72, we're concerned about that as well, because our common area backs up right to Lot 72. And so we want you to be mindful in your changes or adoption, that, is that my time? That Lot 72 be designated and incorporated in there so there isn't any.
Okay. And normally, I won't address this, but Lot 72 is an important. Okay. And normally, I won't address this, but Lot seventy-two is an important piece of this, because Lot seventy-two is a piece of private property. It's owned by the...well, it's leased from us, by the Historical Society.
Right.
They have the requirement, if somebody camps there, to call and say, "I want them removed." That's because that's a piece...that's not city property, like a street is in front of your house.
Okay.
So Lot seventy-two is a special case, and we do not want to mention it again because we don't want to encourage anybody to even try it.
Thank you. Exactly. It is that it's a historical, archaeological...
Right.
So anyways, so we appreciate your serious consideration to our opposition and concerns, and we thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your time. Do we have anybody else that wants to speak? Do we have anybody on Zoom that would like to speak? Doesn't look that way. Okay, we'll bring her back to the council for last comments.
Mr. Attorney, I had a quick question.
One more.
Wait, 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 wait. Please, up to the podium, so we can hear you.
Frank Smithson, and I live in the Village Collection as well. My...will we know, the public know where the spot's going to be, where they're going to be allowed to camp?
No.
No.
Again, we don't want to make that public, and I'll leave that...let the attorney...
I think, you know, all of a sudden, if the public sees someone, I don't know, I haven't found a good enough spot to mention to you, you know, are we not supposed to call because we think that's where they should be?
No, you can call.
Okay.
But we have a limitation on what we can do about it, and that's what the attorney is going to explain.
And cars, does cars come into play?
Yes.
People in cars?
You're camping...if you're sleeping in a car, that's camping.
Okay. And this is going to be protected from the schools? We're not going to...
There is a restriction from the school area on the distance, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much, and I greatly appreciate everything you're all doing. I know you've had a couple...you've had to jump through in the last few months. And I know you all do everything you can to take care of us as much as you can, and let's do this one right, and I have faith that you will. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you want to make a last comment?
Sure. There is no designated place. That's not something that this ordinance establishes. There is no place in the valley where we're going to say, "This is where everyone should go." There is a provision where the city manager has the authority in situations. For example, we get word that it's going to be thirteen below in the valley, and we know that there is one person who is living in their car down on...by the Alisal River. The city manager in that situation could say, "Hey, you're not safe down in the river. Why don't you come up to the municipal parking lot for the night?" It...those kind of emergency and humanitarian opportunities are there. But this is not something where the city is drawing a map saying, "You may camp here, and you will be allowed to do so for an extended period of time." That's not what this ordinance does at all. This ordinance allows the city to remove the camps when they are established. That is what the ordinance is for.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. I also wanted to point out that what this is trying to address more is what happens if any of us, for some reason, find ourselves homeless, and the only option that we have is to camp overnight. This is not to...providing a place for people to come and camp if that is how they want to live. There is a difference. This is a way to deal with an emergency. How do you go about removing them and finding them options? It's not giving them a place where they can indefinitely camp ouch.
Thank you. Good point. Yes, sir.
I also want to make sure everybody understands, we're only talking about public property. Private property is still off limits.
Right.
You can still call the sheriff if they're in your yard or on your business property, and you have to be willing to sign a complaint. And I know Lieutenant Valencia is here, and he can maybe address that a little more specifically, but I did ask him to be here tonight in case there were any questions from the council, and also to address...reaffirm, rather, that the existing ordinance is unenforceable.
Thank you very much.
I have a question. What if a resident chose to open up their...like, sometimes you'll see a church open up their parking lot or something. If a resident chose to open up their yard to all comers?
That's legal, isn't it?
Well, it's certainly not going to be something that we're enforcing, because that is private property use. If they want to invite their grandmother to come stay with them...
In a tent in the front lawn?
If it's in the front lawn, we'd have to take a look at it and make sure that there are no other violations of the code. But this ordinance is not designed to deal with that.
Thank you.
My question, Mr. Attorney, was, in the event of a catastrophe or emergency, earthquake or something like that, would it...would a state of emergency oversee or preclude these events?
Well, that...
For example, if we have to put up a shelter or something, or temporary housing for the public?
Yeah, and that's what the provision that allows the city manager to do it under extraordinary circumstances. If one of those types of circumstances occurs, we want to remain flexible to provide shelter for the community. Keep in mind that someone who is involuntarily homeless may not be the type of homeless that people are used to seeing. It may be something where they've been evicted by their landlord, they really have nowhere to go, but their kids are still in school here in solving, so they want to remain in the community. So this is something that...that could befall any of us at a particular time. And so it does provide opportunities for the city to take care of the chronic issues. But if there's a situation where there's an emergency, or the city manager deems it appropriate to allow someone to stay on short-term basis on public property, there is flexibility for that.
Okay. Follow-up. You had mentioned that you didn't want to make changes because this was a second reading. What recommendations might you have for amendments or modifications in the future?
Well, we could start taking a look at different zones within the community that we think are less appropriate to allow camping at all. We put in, for example, a radius around schools. I will say that the more restrictive the ordinance is, the more likely it is to be overturned by a court. So again, we're trying to thread that needle to make it enforceable to the extent that we can under the existing case law, without making it so that a judge looks at it and says, "Solvang is really not doing anything other than prohibiting it outright by a different...by a different name." So that's why you see those kind of radius in there, the TRC, not allowed in the TRC, not allowed within two-hundred feet of a school. Those are the types of things that we've put in. If we get an indication from the Supreme Court or another court that there are other restrictions that are reasonable to be placed in there, we'll certainly look at adding those in the future.
Any other comments?
There's some questions.
Please step to the podium.
If I can add on to my previous comment, I think the person that we're looking at is the homeless. It's not going to be a family from Guadalupe or Guatemala. It's going to be someone coming out of LA or San Francisco in an old Winnebago, and they're going to park the damn thing on the city street. And they're going to attract other people who want to join in with the substance parties, and that's the person we're going to see in the homeless community. And I'm speaking, having been in the trenches, I think that's the direction we're going. It's not going to be the innocents. It's going to be these people who are going to take advantage of our weather and everything that Solvang offers. So I don't want to see us...
I understand.
Be a sister city with Portland or Seattle, so...
Thank you. Did you want to make a comment, ma'am? We're past the public comment, but I'm going to let a couple more. This is important for everybody.
Hi, I'm Candy Waldra, and I live in the Village Collection with Darlene. My concern is I want to post private property signs on our common areas out in front there. The sidewalk is public property, but the land itself, the innards, is private property owned by us. I want to post signs every hundred yards that say, "Private property, no trespassing." Am I allowed to public...to install those signs?
Yeah, I'm afraid you're going to have to ask the planning department. I don't know the answer to that question specifically, but I would assume so if it is actually private property.
It is.
Not just owned by the HOA. I don't know how that goes. Talk to our planning department, please.
Okay, will do. Thank you.
You do have the right to enforce no trespassing on that private property.
Jim, Mr. Richardson.
Just a little bit of an institutional history that I lived through. When Lot seventy-two, there was...it was a plan to make that an athletic field. If the folks at the Village Collection, some of them would remember that. The Village Collection over...I got voted down four to one because I wanted a sports field there. As it turned out, is that that ground was...is owned by the city, was leased to the preservation people for fifty-five years for a dollar a month, for fifty-five years. And they're over ten years into it, and they've gotten...done nothing to improve it. We had somebody stand up and say, "Well, I'll give you five dollars a month for fifty-five years."
You're way off the subject, Jim.
So, okay, there it is. So there you are.
Thank you. Okay, council members, do I have a motion on this second reading for approval?
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance number twenty-three oh three six nine as written. I want to just offer a little rationale. It's an ordinance that we haven't touched in many, many years. It is unenforceable and out of date, and the sentiment is clear from everyone in solving that we should be doing the maximum to protect our city, and this is an example of that. And we have validated that by, I think, one of the best legal efforts I've seen in a long time, enforcing or offering up language that is current. It's enforceable. It doesn't open us to...well, anything is open to legal challenge, but it minimizes our exposure. And I think what the...it empowers the city manager and the Sheriff's Department to do the maximum, to act on the maximum in terms of enforcement when or if we have these challenges. So, thanks...thank the city attorney again for the piece of work there.
I'll... Without all the dialogue, I'll second the motion.
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Claudia Rona.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Elizabeth Therona.
Yes.
Mayor Infante.
Yes.
Motion passes five oh.
Thank you. Okay. Item seven is AB one, two, three, four reports and council closing comments. Do you have any of those?
I have one. Do we want to wait a minute?
Somebody's yelling at me, Mr. Mayor. Is that online, or what?
The meeting's not over.
Well, actually, since there's no more comments, the meeting is now officially over at seven twenty-two.
Whoa. Nice. Is that a record?
I think that is a record.